Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for the day that you have given us. Lord, we are thankful that we can live in a country where we enjoy many freedoms and we just pray that you would, a leading guide to this group tonight, be some of the leaders in our community, may you help them, Lord, as they're trying to make decisions that are good for the town. And, uh, where we thank you for our first responders, for the men and women who put themselves in harm's way on a regular basis. We pray for their safety. God, we thank you that you're a God of mercy, a God of grace, and a God of love. And then we pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In your baguettes that you received, uh, you had the minutes from our last meeting? Motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Committee reports. Chamber.
Yeah. So, the mayor contacted me yesterday about reviving an old Chamber project that I'd wanted to do, didn't really have a solution, but he did, so it worked out. So, we're reviving the old Christmas lighting contest that used to be, I'm not sure how many years ago, the Chamber used to sponsor, and this is some of the old vintage signings that we still had around. Um, so what we've worked out, and you can interrupt me or correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna have a lighting contest for residents, and it's gonna be broken up by ward, and City Light, Gas, and Water is offering up a prize incentive of fifty dollars...
Fifty dollars off your utility bill for the winner of each one.
Yeah, so each ward, one through five, will have one winner who'll get a fifty-dollar utility credit, which I think is a pretty neat prize, considering you're using more extra electricity for Christmas lights, and it'll just be a fun thing to get people in the Christmas spirit. So, uh, we just wanna let people know. Go ahead.
And there will also be a grand prize overall winner that will receive a one-hundred-dollar credit on their utility bill.
And that'll be total town.
Yeah, that'll be...
So, thanks to the CLGW for putting up that prize. I think that's a great incentive for people. Um, our, we have some Chamber members who are going to be judging that contest, and our goal, we can judge it the weekend before Christmas, and then we can announce the winner on Monday, the twenty-third, through our local media. Uh, and I'm kinda thinking about how this'll work. People are probably gonna have to sign up to be judged because I don't wanna miss anybody who wanted to be judged, and we just overlooked them. So, uh, starting tomorrow, we're gonna get some sort of sign up where people can contact the Chamber, and Ms. Brenda probably will filter those calls when they may arrive at City Hall, and then we can get signed up and divide it out by ward to those proper judges. And also, you know, weather's sometimes an issue right now, so we'll probably aim for judging on Friday night. If there's a weather issue, then we can, then we can change it up to Saturday or Sunday. And again, we'll use our local media to let people know so that they've got their display standing tall and bright and shiny to be judged.
Is that a hundred and fifty dollars for the grand prize winner, or is it a hundred?
It'll just be a hundred, I think, and then a fifty per...
But won't one of the ward winners win?
Well, no, it's...
Not necessarily.
But it's, uh, if the grand prize winner is in Ward One, then they can't have any secondary first prize. So, there's a three-hundred and fifty dollars altogether.
I got you. I got you. I get that.
There was somebody who's a grand, called...
Yeah.
I get you. That's nice.
That's all we got. Thank you.
Alright, lighting. Okay, fire.
Haven't got anything this morning.
Human resources.
I don't have anything this time.
You may.
No, I don't. I don't either.
Police.
Nothing at this time.
Other than our excavator, they're here in seven, ten days. Um, that's, that's really it. We're all excited to do that.
We did, uh, bids or whatever for the building that was coming around?
We did. I have it on here, but we got one more coming in tomorrow, so I don't wanna put them out there until we get that one done.
I think it's gonna be better though.
Oh, we, we hope it...
Okay, great. Storm.
Uh, the back truck is in Troy, Illinois, right now. Been prepped to get here. Uh, hopefully we'll have it within seven to ten days. Don't know that we'll be able to use it very quickly because of the temperatures, but, uh, we do need the building to go along with it to keep it from freezing up any body parts, I guess.
Can we store that compress building or something until, or can we store it anywhere until we get the building?
Yeah, we've got a building. We'll put it where the old one is. I'm assuming they're gonna take it when they come and get it. If not, it's gonna sit outside. They don't wanna be inside.
How about the excavator also?
We'll find a place for it inside if we move a truck out. I mean, when we get the building, it'll go in there, but until then, if we have to move a, one of our big trucks out, we'll put it inside. Our trailers right now are sitting outside, which the last time they tried to use one, had trouble getting the, get it locked up.
Could we put them in the, is there room or adequate storage in the...
Compress facility?
Yeah, we, that we can lock up?
I, I don't know. I don't know that much about the compress out there.
There may be room on that end where we store the police equipment.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
We have some lock issues out there, but we're working on those.
Yeah.
That should be, if you need a...
I hope as soon as we get the bid on the building and everything, we can get it built pretty quick. They're talking about they can do it in the winter. One of the guys said that he's got blankets he can put on there to keep it warm. He said pouring concrete won't be an issue for him.
Pope aren't going quick anyway.
Yeah.
But yeah, we'll figure something out.
It won't be outside. The new stuff won't.
Good. Thank you, sir. Alright, then, industrial, we don't have anything. Just need a closed session afterwards about real estate. Alright, uh, department reports. Fire.
Mayor, council members, a few quick notes. Uh, past, past month, for November, we were looking at seventy-two calls, forty-one of those being medical. Luckily, we made it through Thanksgiving without any significant structure fires due to family cooking or otherwise, so it was a, it was a good weekend for that. Uh, a few notes going on. Any of your constituents in your wards approach you with something of this nature. Uh, we are now issuing warnings as far as illegal fires and so forth, as well as working with our, our dispatch center and our new, uh, software program that we're able to keep up with things a little bit better, and, uh, again, keep everyone in, knowledgeable about the code requirements as far as burning after dark, burning heat waste, and so forth of that. So, again, we're pretty excited with it, with code enforcement and the dispatch that, yeah, we're gonna be able to, uh, make it a little bit more cleaner, cleaner space here in it with that.
Who does someone call?
The, they simply call the, the fire stations to let them know if it's okay due to wind speed and so forth. However, if there's a complaint, they normally call nine-one-one, or they can call one of our, our fire stations, and we'll normally send out a truck investigating to see if there's anything of, uh, substantial foul play going on. And then, like I said, first time, first offense, we'll issue them a warning, give them a guideline to go by. They say a lot of times we get that, well, I didn't know. Now they will know. Second offense, we simply contact dispatch, run a name for it, and then if that name comes up as far as having a warning already, citations will be issued and so forth.
So, is this can pertain to burning leaves, burning trash, or...
Depends on the situation.
Burning anything?
Burning after dark, uh, someone has to be with it at all times. Uh, again, you are allowed to have recreational fires, and again, with prior notifications in the fire department, yes, I'll be having a fire at my backyard and so forth, everything's okay. But, uh, anything of substance, burning leaves, no. Uh, but however, a lot of times folks try to burn trash and so forth after dark, uh, thinking no one will notice. Well, guess what? Your neighbors notice. So, that's where legal complaints come in.
Can we use that same system and, uh, code call for, uh, grass and, uh, other maintenance issues?
Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Do they...
The new software's, yeah. We're working through a ticketing, uh, situation with our code enforcement, and again, it's just taking a little time to get that process up and running. But again, with our new software program, we will be able to utilize code enforcement in that, and that's a good thing because we had some money. We were asking for capital improvements for code enforcement, but we will be able to get a existing system that we just purchased for the fire.
Good deal.
So, we're saving money there.
So, basically, if anything, anything that is a recreational fire, they need to contact the fire department?
Correct. That is correct. Uh, FYI, as far as fire station, uh, construction or thoughts on that. I did find out, again, due to vacation time, uh, with the deer out in the woods in Thanksgiving, uh, I did manage to find some stuff out. Uh, the USDA, if we choose to go with any type of loan in addition to the grants that we may receive, will be a three percent, uh, rate over thirty years.
That's a good rate.
So, uh, we've been able to find, find that out. Talked with James, with our, uh, fire committee. Uh, we will begin with, uh, some local contractors and a local engineer, uh, talking to Mets a little bit, and kinda get some ideas on what we actually want in a structure. And again, that will be presented to the fire committee, and then the council for you all's approval. So, uh, fire department wise, uh, in the process of purchasing fire gear. Again, I had mentioned a few meetings ago that we were having issues through Mirma. The Mirma man was here with us. Didn't realize he was, but anyway, uh, yeah, we're, we're currently okay as far as the money for getting that gear. Uh, purchased four sets so far. We still have four more sets, which again, I may have to look at as far as our budget line items. There may be a way of moving some money over. Again, I was gonna hold off till January, February, to make sure we're good with our budget throughout the year, so I don't wanna jump in there and speak all that. Uh, SCBA's, we've discovered that our current air packs that we wear in higher condition are two-year-old now. Uh, so with that being said, uh, yeah, the money, those things can be quite expensive. We will be looking at a fire grant this year to get those given to us, so. Uh, staff vehicles. Uh, there has been some discussions amongst the, between the fire committee, as well as street and stormwater, about the purchase of another vehicle for Victor Mode, who is currently our, uh, building inspector, as well as part of our storm wa, uh, stormwater management. Uh, so, I don't wanna overstep my boundaries here, guys. Uh, the decision was made half from stormwater and then half from the fire. Uh, with that being said, we, we checked as far as state bid, and, uh, Joe Mock and Ford, uh, as far as a state bid for a extended cab, not a quad cab, but just an extended cab, four-wheel drive, half-ton Ford pickup, is gonna run twenty-five-six-seventy-eight. Right now, in our equipment reserve for fire department, we currently have ninety-six-thousand. Seventy-five thousand is earmarked for our tanker. That, that's leaving us with, uh, a twenty, twenty-one thousand dollar difference. So, with half of that being twelve thousand eight thirty-nine, I could pull that from our fire department equipment reserve if that's possible. So, again...
Let's do it. We need to get it rolling. And then what about the other half, what they come out of stormwater and available in their budget?
What are you gonna do with the Ford that you're currently, that he's currently driving?
That will currently go down to our property maintenance, who is currently driving a O-five Colorado that we had gotten from CLGW.
Uh, what about, uh, the safety cab?
Okay, the safety cab, Tyler Roberts. Uh, right now, we do have in, in our fire departments, our, our one-ton, uh, stat truck that we use for pulling trailers. However, it does best suit it back in the station in case pulling a trailer, someone, as in our hazmat and so forth. What we've kinda discussed, talking with Keith Westerfield with the street department, they do have a O-five F-150 that will be, hopefully be coming offline if capital improvement allows, and it has a hundred thousand miles on it, but, uh, like I said, our property maintenance, those are inspectors are putting about six thousand miles per year on the vehicle. So, that may work out okay for him. I'm fine with trying that, but again, that, uh, me and Keith had a brief discussion just a minute ago, and that may work out if it's up to you all, if that can be allowed.
I'll make the motion on the, the half, uh, stormwater and half firewater. So, the motion's good.
Second.
Cause it's, it's half stormwater and half street?
Yeah, half-street, yes, yes.
Alright, we got a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna quit while I'm ahead. Thank you, sir. You may.
In October, we rolled over thirty dogs that are on intake. We took in thirty-seven for the month of November. We returned eight to owner, euthanized one, transferred out thirty-five, and rolled over twenty-two December, and currently we have twenty-two on intake. And we've been really busy with a lot of demo and glut. And, um, it's like giving this from the day. Coming out, you and Judge Mallon, extra hours to help us with, starts once, just as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Police.
Alright. Um, yesterday, we had several officers attend the marijuana minutes class. It's the new, updating us on the new law for marijuana, medical marijuana. Uh, there's a lot to it, a whole lot to it, and there's no doubt in my mind we're probably gonna have to have more training. There's officers that had some questions that instructors just simply could not answer right now. The state hasn't thought that far ahead. So, hopefully in the near future, we'll get some more training as the laws get updated. Also, on December seventeenth and nineteenth, we're gonna have a few officers going to the ARI class in Malden. This is gonna be a free class. Both of our officers have had this class, or the few others that have not had it, so this should pretty much get everybody up to date on ARI class. Uh, ARI is basically the advanced roadside curmish and driving enforcement, just basically keeping everybody up to date on, uh, field sobriety laws, field sobriety, how to conduct them, and also for, not only alcohol, but also for, uh, drug prepared dropers. Looking forward to that. Officers have also already started doing some walkthrough of local businesses. We're gonna try to step this up between now and Christmas holidays, hopefully having officers present inside the stores. Maybe a little bit of a crime deterrent. I'm not gonna stop all of it, but as time allows, have officers just get out on foot and just walk around inside the store. Hopefully, this will be a big help. Uh, last thing I have, we talked about last week, or the last council meeting about the speed trailers. I talked to the guys coming to repair them. It's fifty-seven-hundred dollars. This includes the twelve-hundred dollars of fee for coming here, and it's also gonna be, uh, so instead of spending sixty-nine-hundred, roughly about fifty-seven-hundred twelve.
And you said it's a year warranty?
Yeah, one-year warranty on, on the parks and stuff. And that's basically pretty much all he can give us on the, on the electronic side of it. But, he should be here middle part of this month, around the fifteenth or so. He can start doing work. It'll take about a day and a half to do both of them. So, we'll have them ready by the end of the month easy.
Good deal.
Good.
Alright, any questions? I have a request, if I could, I don't know if it's right time. I had a concern, citizen mother said that possibly some questionable activity going on in your park parking lot at night.
We've, Mark probably testified more this can be on night shift. We get calls in it, not a lot, and some of it is pretty questionable activity. We're like that.
Okay, so can we possibly send a car through there once in a while, extra?
Yeah, they do, yeah. And sometimes we get calls, and sometimes we'll just, they just pull up on the stuff, the stuff's going on.
So, yeah, I just wanted to bring that, bring that out. I feel like when somebody says something, I need to say something. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, first off, I'd like, on behalf of Gerald and myself, to thank y'all, and, uh, got some good news.
Thank you, y'all.
Fifth Street is, uh, completed. They've got all the concrete poured. However, it's gotta sit for a week before they can open it. So, we're making progress. It's, it's headed that way. Hopefully by next Monday, it'll be opened up, back to traffic, ready to go. Plus, they did pour concrete as opposed to the asphalt that we've been doing, so it should last way longer and be a lot more efficient if we're opening than like off with them. Uh, the, we've made no trespassing and authorized personnel signs for the compress, and we've got several of them up. We've still gotta make a few more. I think we've got all the posts up. We just have to make a few more signs. Uh, at the request of, uh, Tyler Roberts, we've made number plates to number the buildings also. We just have to get with somebody on what, number, who want what building, and somebody will get them up. We've got them ready to put up. Uh, Mr. Freeman, you had asked about a cost analysis for concrete, us pouring it versus having it, uh, contracted out. By us doing it, we could save over fifty percent probably on a lot of it, but it would take a little bit longer to do, cause they're set up with the equipment, and that's, that's all they do, so they're very proficient at it. We do a lot of things, so while we can do it, we won't do it as fast as them. But, uh, it would cost, we would save a little bit of money by us doing it.
Would it be a staffing issue?
It wouldn't as much be a staffing issue as it would be, some of the things we would be doing wouldn't be getting done. You know what I'm saying? But, what I had thought about looking at was maybe not cutting, completely cutting it out, but cutting back. Maybe contracting out the bigger jobs that would take us longer to do, and us do some of the smaller ones that they were doing. Uh, where we could, you know, generally, we're gonna have three men out there breaking it out if it's big, because we have one on the equipment and a couple of trucks running, so we can get it out quicker, and then maybe a couple setting up, and then everybody will be out there pouring it. But, once it's down, most everybody will leave with one or two people. So, we can still do other things. It should be here and there when we have two or three people out there working, but I don't see an issue cause we've done it fast.
So, just like a, a management issue? With, with good management, it could be done.
But we've got a lot of things to do, but we can, we, we can do some of it. Like I said, I, I think we can cut back and save a little bit of money instead of letting them do the bigger ones, so it, we're not tying up our, our people as, as an all.
Like a good plan.
Alright, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, and that's all I've got. They, of course, told you about the excavator and back truck, so hopefully within next week or so, we'll have them here, and we'll get those, hopefully that last bid tomorrow, and so we can get something started on the building. Y'all don't have...
I'm gonna say this about the building. The bid we get, I know we're probably didn't make a vote, but I don't know, it's pretty important we get that before we get some January, February started, don't we think?
We need to get the buildings which we can.
So...
Because we got the moker who just need to be, I guess, out of that building at some point in time.
Once we get that, uh, final bid in, is there a way to do a email, phone?
It's been approved, isn't it?
It's been approved, right?
So, we just need the...
The lowest bid?
Yeah.
So, we can just go with the lowest bid and tell it start?
No, it's a third question.
No, you have to...
Do another one?
The council asked to do it.
Could it be a five-minute meeting?
Yeah.
Alright. Set's been cleared. Do a five-minute meeting. Six, please?
Yeah.
We'll pull six, please.
Yeah.
I'll contact you since I get that information.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
We do need closed meetings.
See if we have any new business. Uh, that, uh, John Robinson's term on CLGW is up, and, uh, pointed him, uh, back for his third term, and, uh, need a motion and a second on it?
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry, y'all. I usually don't bring it in here.
Mayor's report.
We do have this, an ordinance that was...
Sorry.
It's on the agenda. It's ordered you all to give this afternoon or late this morning. And, uh, first reading is an ordinance repealing section seven-hundred-point-oh-five-oh of the municipal code of the city, and enacting in its, uh, new section seven-hundred-point-oh-five-oh establishing meeting times for the Board of Public Works. What this does is the old section seven-hundred-oh-five-oh sets the meet, sets meetings the first and third Mondays of every, uh, month. This changes it to at least one meeting a month at a time to be determined by the president and the board. That was, is that request of the Board of Public Works.
Why did they require we do this? I mean, I know they requested it, but why are they going for? Do they wanna go from two meetings to one?
Just whenever they want it.
Just whenever they want?
No, it's still one on one.
At least one time a month.
Yeah. Do they get paid for that position?
Yeah.
I'll do it. Are they gonna cut the pay?
They get paid per meeting, I believe.
Per meeting? Okay. We have a motion and a second? Well, what'd you say?
We have a motion and a second.
Have they got a motion?
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Again, all you're doing, vote on your vote this time is just approving the first, the first move you have. This isn't a yes or no.
Well, we got a hundred percent.
Second reading. An ordinance repealing section seven-hundred-point-oh-five-oh for the municipal code of the city of Kennet, and enacting in its stead new section seven-hundred-point-oh-five-oh establishing meeting times for the Board of Public Works.
We need a, we need a motion?
I'm making a motion, and you can discuss it for anyone.
Motion and a second, or we're gonna discuss it.
We need a motion and a second, discuss it.
You make the motion.
Alright.
I'll take it.
We'll discuss it.
Why, why would we, or why would we not want that?
Yeah. I mean, did it, weren't we just kinda getting in a groove of, when we, they had a report, we can have it here. We were the first and third Tuesday?
We're first and third, and they moved it to second and fourth.
Right.
And, but basically, what this looks like to me is that they're just going down to one, uh, one meeting a month.
Two if needed. What they told me was, uh, what they told me is they probably still have two meetings a month. They just wanted to do, required to only have one.
Like, this month, they're only, for December, they're only having one because the second one, the meeting Christmas Eve.
Which is normal. It's normal to cancel that one.
I don't see a problem with that.
And then, uh...
I don't see a problem that they would cancel that one.
This gets them on from two to one.
That's always been a problem.
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
Yeah. Cause we, you know, we don't get the minutes from meetings anyway, till a month or so late.
Right.
And the cooperation between the CLGW board and this body is...
I think one of the reasons why they'd get them later is they haven't been approved yet. Uh, can they send over the minutes after a meeting with a statement saying these have not been officially approved?
Of course they can.
So, we can ask them to do that.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Do you wanna add that to the motion?
Yes.
No, that's not, that's not...
Except for that.
That's, I'll ask them if, uh, we make sure we get that done.
We've also not had any cooperation between CLGW and this body, between, uh, having a representative here to explain the current state of industrial development. So, in other words, in my opinion, they're not cooperating very much, and now they wouldn't do less work. Like I said, they still, they, they indicated they intended two meetings every month. I don't think the, the real gist of the...
The ordinance is the number meetings when they have them.
Right.
No, no. We have a motion and a second? It's gonna be a roll call?
Yes. We do have a motion?
We have a motion and a second?
Aye.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Yes.
No.
Yes. Nope.
Yes.
Five.
I'm looking there. I hear it's the time for...
Still fails.
Yes.
They'll have six votes, no matter how many people are here, they have to have six votes to pass an ordinance. So, there are five yes votes, the ordinance passed.
Alright. Mayor's report. Hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving, and, uh, looking for the new, uh, uh, Christmas season and its appointments. Lovely, the Chamber really pushed a shop local. And I hope a lot of people out there are really adhering to that, that it's look, local first, see what you can find, uh, and then go outside. The R.A. City, that is one-hundred percent sales tax based. Uh, so going and buying a hundred dollars worth of groceries in Pariboo gives Pariboo money and doesn't give anything to us. Uh, so it's, by doing that, you're helping our street department, our water department, our steward department, your name department, police department, that fire department. Every part, aspect of the city comes from that, that sales tax money, so please, shop local. We've got more stores on the square than we had in quite a while. Uh, that it's, uh, really looking, you know, stay upbeat and positive and, you know, let's keep kinda going in the right direction. Uh, in the last two weeks, talking with CLGW themselves, uh, you know, it'd really be nice to be out in the squirrel season here in town, but, uh, it's sorta hard to do, uh, that, uh, I've seen some of the pictures of what it did, they were on Facebook earlier this week. Uh, what one little squirrel could do to an entire transformer, substation, and wires.
Yeah, but think what it did to him.
He won't do that again.
Yeah, it's, he won't be doing that again, but you know, he, he'd been a whole lot better squirreling dumplings. But, uh, um, yeah, squirrels have been a really bad problem even Thanksgiving Day. Uh, it's a part of the town, you know, uh, one of the restaurants was affected here in town that's sitting up here, uh, by a squirrel, you know, touching two parts at the same time he wasn't supposed to.
Birds are just as bad.
Yeah. So, uh, um, so yeah, it's, squirrels are a problem and don't know how to even combat that at all, but, uh, you know, it's, it is a laughing matter because it is, you know, squirrels, how many movies are out there talking about squirrels? But, uh, I wanna thank CLGW workers, you know, they got up, they left their homes, left their family dinners and worked, whether they're on call or not. They got out there, just like our fire, EMS, and the street department, and police department. You know, when a situation comes up and they are needed, what do they do? Our men and women, they get up, leave their families, and go to support this community in every way that they can. So, uh, um, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and doing those in that aspect, but again, squirrel. Public comment. Such a vast majority here tonight.
I have one thing, I just wanna tell whoever did all those lights around town, through the middle of town that CLGW put up, they really looked good. I've had lots of people call me, text me, email me about it, people passing through Kennet over the holidays, talking about how good they looked.
Alright, uh, we're gonna need a motion to go into closed session? Second. All in favor? Roll call? Yes.
Yes.
Aye.